The regular session of the Sangguniang Panlalawigan is called order. Kindly stand for the prayer to be led by Honorable Yonida Pilaudenio. And after the prayer, please remain standing for the singing.
Let us give him our best. He will be ready. He will be dancing.
Let us bow our heads and feel the presence of the Lord in the name of the Father and of the Son, of the Holy Spirit. Amen. Lord God, as we commence this session of the Sangguniang Panlalawigan, we humbly ask your divine presence and guidance. We acknowledge your infinite wisdom and seek your direction in the matters sit before us. Grant us the courage to pursue justice, uphold truth, and promote the common good. May our discussion be characterized by respect, patience, and humility as we engage in fruitful dialogue. Help us to discern the needs of our province and to envision a brighter future for our people. Please us with unity and cooperation that we may work harmoniously towards the betterment of our society. We offer these legislative proceedings to you, trusting in your unfeeling love. In your holy name we pray. Amen. In the name of the Father and of the Son, of the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Mga tababayan ang pambansang awit ng Pilipinas.
Itan mga norti halun, pasangkuan ay mga iba paunun. Tungguk kita simpan raun, san kanan yus gaun. Pasarayu pagmuto kita, kabubuwasun kapantang. Ang mayrooy magahungarun, sa kabulug birin ang padahon. Mga tuning kita ni sumunoy, kung sayo nga tunang mayrooy. Napuhuk kita sa kabawasan, kung hinglaban ka osnag. Pasarayu pagmuto kita, kabubuwasun kapantang. Ang mayrooy magahungarun, sa kabulug birin ang padahon. Ang mayrooy magahungarun, sa kabulug birin ang padahon. Ang mayrooy magahungarun, sa kabulug birin ang padahon.
Thank you. Please take your respective seats. SP Secretary kindly called the members of this August study for the purpose of determining.
Honorable Dato Clarence E.
Present.
Honorable Abalon Don L.
Present.
Honorable Dorado Lopez Jr. E. Honorable Dubongo Arturo Jr. T. Honorable Galit Junesho Dexter D. Honorable Hernandez Neil S. Honorable Laudenio Yonida P. Honorable Layok Asela Rafa Andrea G. Honorable Ong Najab Bianca Nicolet L. Honorable Ong Chuwan Emil Nicholas II B. Honorable Miranda Gerardo Gerard A. Honorable Silvano Gina O. Honorable Singzon Victoria II M. Honorable Uy Florian D. There are eight members who are physically present. Three members are present via Zoom. Total number of members present, eleven including the Presiding Officer.
With the presence of eleven members including the Presiding Officer, we have a call of today's regular session. Majority Leader.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon to our Presiding Chair, the Honorable Vice Governor Attorney Clarence I Dato. Of course, my esteemed colleagues in this August Chamber, the Secretary, all the staff. Mr. Chairman, we also have, we are fortunate today, Mr. Chairman, for having with us today our very own DILG Provincial Director, Madam Geraldine C. Makilabit. LGOO Two Jesa S. Sumayod, maybe, medyo na late lang. LGOO Six Christine L. Delarosa. MLGO DILG Katarman. LGOO Six Romi B. Orca. MLGO DILG Gamay. LGOO Six Art Henry Y. Bulick. DILG MLGO Lapinig. And LGOO Six Mil Vilios Di Palier. MLGO DILG San Roque. Complete. They are here today, Mr. Chairman, to receive the resolution of commendation which will later be presented and read by our colleague. And also, Mr. Chairman, we have today, Mr. J Samuel Tan. He is here today to receive the resolution of commendation for placing number eight in the September 2025 Psychometrician's Licenseure Examination. Mr. Chairman, kindly please recognize and acknowledge our esteemed and distinguished guest in the gallery.
Provincial Director Geraldine Makilabit, together with her colleagues, the MLGO mentioned earlier by the Majority Leader, and of course, Mr. J Samuel Tan. They're hereby recognized and welcome to the South West Chamber.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, to proceed, when I consider item number six, the first reading and referral to the appropriate committees of proposed ordinances and resolutions, measures, communications, petitions, and memoranda to the appropriate committees, kindly please the Secretary to read all the items as reflected in item number six, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, the Secretary kindly read all the items under item number six.
Application for Accreditation of Marubay Borao Fisher Fox Association, Barangay Marubay Lauang, Northern Samar.
The application for accreditation of Marubay Borao Fisher Fox Association of Barangay Marubay Lauang, Northern Samar is hereby referred to the Committee on People's Organizations, Non-Governmental Organizations, and Cooperatives.
Proposed resolution is sponsored by the Honorable Emil Nicholas B. Ong Chuwan II and co-sponsored by the Honorable Gerardo Gerard A. Miranda entitled, "A Resolution Commending Ms. Aikabel C. Clementer of Katarman, Northern Samar for Winning Gold and Silver Medals in Cycling During the Batang Pinoy 2025 National Finals, Thereby Giving Pride and Honor to the Province of Northern Samar." Proposed resolution is sponsored by the Honorable Gerardo Gerard A. Miranda and co-sponsored by the Honorable Emil Nicholas B. Ong Chuwan II entitled, "A Resolution Commending the Local Youth Development Office of San Roque Headed by Mr. Elmer B. Corong For Being Recognized as National Awardee in the Most Outstanding Local Youth Development Office Category Component Cities and Municipalities During the Philippines Sangguniang Kabataan Awards 2025 Held on October 26, 2025, in Novotel Manila, Araneta City, Quezon City, Philippines." Proposed resolution is sponsored by the Honorable Gerardo Gerard A. Miranda and co-sponsored by the Honorable Emil Nicholas B. Ong Chuwan II entitled, "A Resolution Commending the SK Council of barangay Sanusel, La Visareys, Northern Samar Headed by SK Chairman Honorable Mark Ian Dumikel. Host project Hakbang Kabataan program was adjudged as national finalist in the most outstanding Sangguniang Kabataan project category during the Philippines Sangguniang Kabataan Awards 2025 Held on 26 October 2025, in Novotel Manila, Araneta City, Quezon City, Philippines." Proposed resolution is sponsored by the Honorable Gerardo Gerard A. Miranda and co-sponsored by Honorable Emil Nicholas B. Ong Chuwan II entitled, "A Resolution Commending SK Federation of Lauang Headed by SK Municipal Federation President Honorable Alicia Rose I Kitorio For Being Recognized as National Finalist in the Most Outstanding Sangguniang Kabataan Council Category During the Philippines Sangguniang Kabataan Awards 2025 Held on 26 October 2025, in Novotel Manila, Araneta City, Quezon City, Philippines." Proposed resolution sponsored by the Honorable Gerardo Gerard A. Miranda and co-sponsored by the Honorable Emil Nicholas B. Ong Chuwan II entitled, "A Resolution Commending SK Council of barangay Pulangi Headed by SK Chairman Honorable Wensi Munkada For Being Recognized as National Awardee in the Most Outstanding Sangguniang Kabataan Council Category During the Philippines Sangguniang Kabataan Awards 2025 Held on 26 October 2025, in Novotel Manila, Araneta City, Quezon City, Philippines." Proposed resolution is sponsored by the Honorable Gerardo Gerard A. Miranda and co-sponsored by the Honorable Emil Nicholas B. Ong Chuwan II entitled, "A Resolution Commending the SK Council of barangay Pilipil Headed by SK Chairman Honorable Renz Joshua Damyar For Being Recognized as National Awardee in the Most Outstanding Sangguniang Kabataan Council Category During the Philippines Sangguniang Kabataan Awards 2025 Held on 26 October 2025, in Novotel Manila, Araneta City, Quezon City, Philippines." Proposed resolution is sponsored by the Honorable Gerardo Gerard A. Miranda and co-sponsored by the Honorable Emil Nicholas B. Ong Chuwan II entitled, "A Resolution Commending the SK Council of barangay Abad Santos Headed by SK Chairman Honorable Marian Saludario For Being Recognized as National Finalist in the Most Outstanding Sangguniang Kabataan Council Category During the Philippines Sangguniang Kabataan Awards 2025 Held on 26 October 2025, in Novotel Manila, Araneta City, Quezon City, Philippines."
The resolutions of commendation, seven, the proposed seven resolutions of commendation are hereby referred to the Committee on Laws, Justice, Human Rights, and Public Accountability. Thank you, SP Secretary. Majority Leader.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now proceed with item number seven, the calendar of business. Under item number seven, we have smelter A, the presentation of resolutions of commendation. As mentioned earlier, there are two resolution of commendation for presentation. First in the order is, under item number one is SP Resolution Number 257 Series of 2025 Sponsored by the Honorable Don L. Abalon. This is a resolution commending the herein-named officers and personnel of the Department of the Interior and Local Government, Northern Samar, DILG Northern Samar, for their exemplary services rendered and significant contributions in the confirmant of the 2024 Seal of Good Local Governance, SGLG, award for the Province of Northern Samar and ten of its component municipalities. Mr. Chairman, to read and present the resolution of commendation, kindly please recognize the one of the members of the Committee on Laws, the Honorable Emil Nicholas Ong Chuwan, Mr. Chairman.
Honorable Emil Nicholas B. Ong Chuwan II is recognized.
Thank you, Majority Floor Leader. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Please allow me to have the honor to read SP Resolution Number 257 Series of 2025 as sponsored by our Chairman of Committee on Laws, the Honorable Don L. Abalon. SP Resolution Number 257, a resolution commending the herein-named officers and personnel of the Department of Interior Local Government, Northern Samar, for their exemplary services rendered and significant contributions in the confirmant of the 2024 Seal of Good Local Governance award for the Province of Northern Samar and ten of its component municipalities. Whereas Republic Number 11292, otherwise known as an act establishing and institutionalizing the seal of good local governance for local government units and allocating for this purpose the Seal of Good Local Governance Fund, institutionalized the seal of good local governance to thoroughly assess the performance of all the local government units in the country. Whereas the SGLG is needed to ensure that local government units uphold good governance, promote transparency and accountability among its services and continuously improve their performance, which would lead to better service delivery for the community. Whereas for the calendar year 2024, the Province of Northern Samar, together with ten of its component municipalities, namely Bobon, Katarman, Gamay, Lauang, Lapinig, Mapanas, Palapag, Pambuhan, San Antonio, and San Roque, were conferred with prestigious seal. Whereas the Sangguniang Panlalawigan acknowledges and recognizes DILG Northern Samar's exemplary efforts, particularly its technical and field officers in advancing the SGLG standards across the province. Whereas the following officials and personnel of DILG Northern Samar are deemed worthy of recognition from this Sangguniang. Number one, led by Provincial Director Geraldine C. Makilabit. Number two, clusterhead Mauricio T. Labado Jr. Number three, program manager, Mr. Eduardo A. Diaz. Number four, LGOO Two Jesa S. Sumayod, SGLG Provincial Focal Person. Number five, LGOO Six Veggie T. Lucenesio, MLGO DILG Bobon. Number six, LGOO Six Christine L. Delarosa, MLGO DILG Katarman. Number seven, LGOO Six Romi B. Horka, MLGO DILG Gamay. Number eight, LGOO Six Jorge B. Durum, MLGO DILG Lauang. Number nine, LGOO Six Art Henry Y. Bulick, MLGO DILG Lapinig. Number ten, LGOO Six Elaine Abigail N. DeLorino, MLGO DILG Mapanas. Number eleven, LGOO Six Mark R. Balagat, MLGO DILG Palapag. Number twelve, LGOO Six Diana C. Ligidligid, MLGO DILG Pambuhan. Number thirteen, LGOO Six Eva Christian R. Toray, MLGO DILG San Antonio. And lastly, number fourteen, LGOO Six Mil Vilios Di Palier, MLGO DILG San Roque. Now therefore, upon motion of the Honorable Don L. Abalon, duly seconded, this Sangguniang Panlalawigan resolves as it hereby resolve to commend as it hereby commends the herein-named officers and personnel of the Department of Interior and Local Government, Northern Samar, for their exemplary services rendered and significant contributions in the confirmant of the 2024 Seal of Good Local Governance, SGLG award for the Province of Northern Samar and ten of its component municipalities. Resolve further to furnish copies of this resolution to herein-named DILG Northern Samar officers and personnel for their information and guidance, adopted by the Sangguniang Panlalawigan in session assembled last second day of June 2025 in Katarman, Northern Samar. I hereby certify to the correctness of foregoing resolution which was duly adopted by the Sangguniang Panlalawigan during its regular session last second June 2025, signed by our SP Secretary Bernardo S. Balangpit Jr. and attested by our Vice Governor Attorney Clarence E. Dato.
Thank you, Honorable Emil Nicholas B. Ong Chuwan II. Majority Leader.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, another resolution for commendation to be presented by a member of the Committee on Education, the Honorable Yonida Pilaudenio. Kindly please recognize.
Honorable Yonida Pilaudenio is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Majority Floor Leader. For and in behalf of the Committee on Education and being a member, I was dedicated to read the resolution of commendation to one of our Nortehanon. This is resolution number 542 Series of 2025. A resolution commending Mr. J Samuel Espilimbergutan of Katarman, Northern Samar and granting him the amount of 20,000 pesos incentive for placing eighth in the September 2025 Psychometrician Licenseure Examination. This was sponsored by Honorable Rafa, Asila Rafa Andrea G. Layom. Whereas Mr. J Samuel Espilimbergutan is a son of Mr. G. Repitan and Mrs. Sarlin Espilimbergutan of barangay Dalakit, Katarman, Northern Samar, has obtained the eighth highest rank with a rating of 88% in the September 2025 Psychometrician Licenseure Examination administered by the Professional Regulation Commission, PRC. Whereas Mr. Tan obtained the degree of Bachelor of Arts in Psychology from the University of the Philippines, Takloban College, on July 2025. Whereas, as an eighth placer, Mr. Tan gave honor and prestige to the Province of Northern Samar and served as an inspiration and encouragement in our youth, a challenge to develop their potential, to realize their dreams, and to succeed in their respective fields of interest. Whereas his triumphant entry into the country's elite role of board top-notchers, places is a story of perseverance, sacrifice, discipline, determination, and hard work that deserve distinct recognition from this August Chamber. Through this resolution of commendation, this Sangguniang Panlalawigan perpetuates her legacy as an outstanding young Nortehanon who is worthy of emulation and recognition by the generation and those to come. Whereas Mr. Tan is granted a cash incentive in the amount of 20,000 pesos to be taken from the MOO fund of the Office of the Governor, Harris Christopher M. Ong Chuwan, as a warm gesture of recognition from the provincial government for bringing honor to the province and to the people of Northern Samar. Wherefore, upon motion of Honorable Asila Rafa Andrea G. Layom, Chairperson, Committee on Education, unanimously seconded, this Sangguniang Panlalawigan resolve as it hereby resolve to commend as it hereby commends Mr. J Samuel of barangay Dalakit, Katarman, Northern Samar, and granting him a cash incentive in the amount of 20,000 pesos. And granting him a cash incentive in the amount of 20,000 pesos For placing eighth in the September 2025 Psychometrician Licenseure Examination. Resolve finally that copies of this resolution be furnished upon Mr. G. Samuel Espilimberg Gutan And for an other concern for their information and guidance. Adopted by the Sangguneang Panlalawigan, this session assembled On the thirteenth day of October 2025 at Katharman, Northern Samar. I hereby certify to the correctness of the foregoing resolution Which was duly adopted by the Sangguneang Panlalawigan during the regular session on the thirteenth of October 2025. Signed, Bernardo S. Balankit Jr., MPE, OIC, Secretary to the Sangguneang Panlalawigan, Attested, Attorney Clarence E. Dato, Vice Governor, Presiding Officer, Approved, Harris Christopher Im Ongchuan, Governor.
Thank you, Honorable Yunita P. Laudenio, Majority Leader.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, For the formal presentation of the two resolution as read by our colleagues. I move for a few minutes suspension. Provincial Director Makil... Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's still under the calendar of business under item number seven. We have item Ismulator B, the consideration of the proposed ordinance Sponsored by the Honorable Abalon, Don El Abalon, Entitled an Ordinance Approving and Implementing the Paling QR PH+ Program In the Province of Northern Samar in joining business establishments and local transportation To adopt QR PH+ digital payments for other purposes. Mr. Chairman, parliamentary status is for sponsorship speech After, to be followed by peer interpolation, debate, and amendment. Mr. Chairman, considering that the principal sponsor is not physically present, May we know from the, what is the pleasure of the good sponsor, Mr. Chairman, Considering that the sponsor is joining, is joining our session via Zoom?
Uh, Mr. Chair. Uh, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
May I...
Honorable Don El Abalon.
For the deferment, may I move for the deferment of the second of the sponsorship speech And the period of amendment and interpolation to the next session?
Second. Uh, with that motion of the sponsor of this proposed ordinance, The ordinance, uh, approving and implementing the Paling QR PH+ Program In the Province of Northern Samar is hereby deferred. Thank you, Honorable Don El Abalon, Majority Leader.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Considering that now, considering, Mr. Chairman, That no members would like to make use of item number eight, When I proceed with item number nine, the other matters, Kindly please direct the secretary to read the only one item Uh, under item, under number nine. Uh, this is municipal resolutions endorsed to the Office of the Provincial Vice Governor, Our Presiding Chair, and we refer to the appropriate committees. With this, kindly direct the secretary, thank, uh, Mr. Chairman.
SP Secretary kindly read the item under other matters.
Resolution Number 227 Series of 2025 of the Municipality of Lavisares, Northern Samar. Entitled: A Resolution Approving the Annual Investment Program, AIP, for 2026 Of the Municipality of Lavisares, Northern Samar.
Uh, Resolution Number 227 Series of 2025 of the Municipality of Lavisares, Northern Samar Is hereby referred to the Committee on Finance Budget and Appropriations. Thank you, SP Secretary, Majority Leader.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, considering that we have already tackled our short agenda for today. Uh, before we, before I move for adjournment of our session, I may request for a few minutes suspension.
Session suspended. Following week seventeen, twenty-eight, November twenty-eighth, next session, our last session for November. Session resumes. Majority Leader.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, may I move for adjourn... May I move for adjournment of our regular session until the next session, Which will be scheduled on November twenty-eighth, uh, 2025 at 2:00 PM In the, at two o'clock in the afternoon, so move, Mr. Chairman.
With that motion duly seconded, today's regular session is hereby adjourned Until November twenty-eighth, 2025 at two o'clock in the afternoon. Thank you, everyone, and good afternoon.